Do I have to read something?
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this special meeting for October 19th to order. If you would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Judge Amanda Dunnick.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Maybe seated? Well, welcome, everyone, to the third meeting scheduled to review the 2023 municipal budget. Tonight's departments, we're going to cover personnel, human rights, city court, city clerk, city council, and Beech Grove Cemetery. Just like the other two meetings, we'll bring forward each department head to allow them to point out any major differences in their budget and to answer any questions from the council. Just a reminder, we do want to provide time for comments and questions from the public, and we'll open the floor after the council completes their questioning of each department to provide that time. I would ask anyone with questions or comments to direct those to the council. If the council cannot answer your questions or address your comments, we'll ask the department head or the controller to do so. Also, please try to limit your comments to around three minutes, and please stay on topic. Tonight's agenda, we're going to begin with the vote on the approval of the 2023 salary ordinances, and we'll begin with ordinance 36-22, which is the salary ordinance covering elected officials. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Did we do roll call already?
Oh, excuse me, roll call. My bad, I'm going off script here. Excuse me, roll call, please. Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Ingram.
Yes.
Mr. Garrett.
Yes.
Mr. Overby.
Yes.
Mr. Dishman.
Yes.
Mr. Green.
Here.
Mr. Polk.
Present.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Ms. Selvi.
Here.
Mr. Robinson.
Yep.
All present.
Sorry, guys, I was, and lady, I was just so excited to get into, into business. So with that, we will, I'll entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 36-22 covering the salary ordinance for elected officials.
Second.
Motion was made by Councilman Ingram, seconded by Councilman Polk. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on ordinance 36-22? Any questions from the council? Anything from the audience? Roll call, please.
Mr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Overby.
Yes.
Mr. Polk.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Garrett.
Yes.
Mr. Dishman.
Yes.
Mr. Ingram.
Yes.
Ms. Selvi.
Yes.
President Robinson.
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Ordinance 37-22 is also a salary ordinance covering the police department. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on ordinance 37-22?
I'll make a motion that we adopt 37-22.
Motion was made by Councilman Polk, seconded by Councilman Ingram. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on ordinance 37-22? If you can't tell, I was running late, hurrying, trying to get here, and I've not slowed down yet, so my apologies. Everybody knows how that is, right?
No, these are formalities, anyway.
All right, yeah. Anyone from the audience wishing to speak on ordinance 37-22? Roll call, please.
Mr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Overby.
Yes.
Mr. Polk.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Garrett.
Yes.
Mr. Dishman.
Yes.
Mr. Ingram.
Yes.
Ms. Selvi.
Yes.
President Robinson.
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Ordinance 38-22 is also the salary ordinance, which covers the fire department. I'll entertain a motion to adopt ordinance 38-22.
Second.
Motion was made by Councilwoman Selvi, that I hear is seconded from Councilman Green. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on ordinance 38-22? Questions from the council? Anything from the audience? Roll call, please.
Mr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Overby.
Yes.
Mr. Polk.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Ingram.
Yes.
Mr. Garrett.
Yes.
Ms. Selvi.
Yes.
Mr. Dishman.
Yes.
President Robinson.
Yes.
Nine yeses.
Ordinance 39-22, the final ordinance this evening, is the salary ordinance covering civil employees. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance 39-22?
Mr. President, I make a motion to adopt.
Motion was made very formally by Councilman Ingram. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Garrett. Is there anyone here wishing to speak on ordinance 39-22? Good evening, Mr. Wright.
Good evening. I was sent an amendment to that for the adding the working foreman to the street department. Adam and I talked this afternoon, and that's supposed to be in there. He already had it in his budget that he presented to you, we're just adding the language of the official position.
Do we know the bi-weekly amount?
It's an hourly rate of not to exceed $23.89. And that, I have a copy here, if you approve the amendment for the clerk's office, it's sent to me by Aubrey Christ this afternoon.
And we're adding this? This is currently not-
You're simply adding that as a position with the rate of pay, it's not included in the one before you now.
I will make a motion to amend ordinance 39-22 to add the working foreman with an hourly rate not to exceed $23.89 per hour.
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Polk. Any discussion on the proposed amendment? Anything from the audience? Roll call, please, on the amendment.
Mr. Ingram.
Yes.
Mr. Polk.
Yes.
Mr. Garrett.
Yes.
Ms. Selvi.
Yes.
Mr. Rob, or, excuse me, Mr. Overby.
Yes.
Mr. Dishman.
No.
Mr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
And President Robinson.
Yes.
Eight yeses, one no.
Now, I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance 39-22 as amended. Motion was made by Councilman Ingram, seconded by Councilman Polk. I know I don't need to, but it's just fun to do, anyway.
I know, yeah. I like doing that.
Anything further on ordinance 39-22? Any questions from the council? Is there anything from the audience this evening? Roll call, please, on ordinance 39-22 as amended.
Mr. Garrett.
Yes.
Ms. Selvi.
Yes.
Mr. Green.
Yes.
Mr. Overby.
Yes.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
Mr. Ingram.
Yes.
Mr. Dishman.
No.
Mr. Polk.
Yes.
President Robinson.
Yes.
Eight yeses.
That is it for the salary ordinances. Now, we'll move into the remaining departments from the 2023 municipal budget, and we'll begin with personnel. Good evening, Ms. Wilson. We will begin by asking you if there's any major differences you'd like to point out in your budget, and I don't believe there are.
No major difference, just one change that I had made from last year. I moved $1,000 from office supplies into training fees and travel, mostly that's training. I do work with local organizations, as well as SHRM, a local HR organization, and Chaffey Leadership Academy, and would like to be able to take advantage of some training through association of cities and towns. The budget, as it was, didn't really allow for a lot of training, so I think this will be a little bit more adequate and get a little bit more training done this year.
Any questions from the council for Ms. Wilson? Anything from the audience? Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Up next is the Human Rights Commission. Good evening, Ms. Yvonne.
Evening, good evening.
Is there any major differences in your budget you'd like to talk about?
Well, the, just for this year, actually, I noticed that my electric will be, it's already at 93% for this year. So what do I do? Do I need to move any, do I need to move any money?
We'll take care of that before the end of the year.
Okay, all right, so I am assuming, I'm assuming that if it gets at 93% this time next year, that controller will take care of it.
Yeah, what we'll have to do is just make an additional appropriation to cover it, and that, we can do that.
That, that's, that's all I had.
Start turning the lights out.
Her lights are very dim.
My lights, okay, anybody been in my office?
Yes.
Are my lights on?
No.
We need to buy you some LED bulbs.
My lights are not on.
I'm kidding with you.
I turn my lights on. Okay.
Is there anything else in the budget you'd like to discuss?
No, it's good, thank you. Oh, I do want to say thank you for the raises, for myself and for my EEOs, or actually, my Fair Housing Investigator. Thank you, we appreciate it.
Is there any questions from the council for Ms. Thompson?
Ask me anything, you better ask me now.
Is there anything from the audience? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Yvonne. Up next is city court.
Hi, Amanda Dunnick, Judge, City Court. The only thing that is different from last year, or this year to next year, is I'm trying to move more and more from the court operation, from the tax dollar, to user fees, and so we've moved the second, or the fourth court secretary position into probation user fees instead of the tax dollar. I would ask that we're able to, I don't know if I need to get with Craig on this or not, to change that to bailiff position. That way, we have two bailiff positions. It's kind of a combo spot, because he does do court secretary work, but he is a part-time police officer, so he cannot be a court secretary in a criminal court, that's a conflict of interest. But more importantly, he has arrest power, so he's the one that we've been having transport to and from city court. If there's anybody who has an active warrant, he's the one that takes them into custody. If we need somebody brought for trials or for hearings, he's the one that does it, so we're trying to minimize the burden that city court has on the police department because of the low staffing there. So working pretty hard within what you guys have given me to make sure that we're becoming more self-sufficient, less of a burden on the tax dollar, and less of a burden on city police.
I would suspect that, is that just a position, is that just a title, that, would that need to just go through HR, would that?
Would, Brad, do something that you'd recommend on salary ordinance?
Just, and it, I mean, I would request it be titled Inside Bailiff, because the other bailiff is the one that goes outside and serves paperwork, so we could have an outside bailiff and inside bailiff. When I'm on the bench, whenever I've ordered anybody into the courtroom, I have both of them in here to provide security.
Yeah. Either way, it's not, not anything we can do this evening, but certainly something we can get taken care of before the end of the year, before 2023's budget kicks in, so I would recommend getting with Craig and seeing what we have to do to get that taken care of, and I'm sure the council would approve of something like that.
And I've worked with chiefs alone, too. They've become special deputies or special officers of some, there's some provision that they have in the police department, which gives them the arrest powers, that way we don't have to pull MPD off the road, so.
Good.
I'm working with all the departments that I can to make sure that everything flows smooth.
Sure. Very good. Anything else you'd like to point out in the budget?
That's really it, just the normal run-of-the-mill stuff, just getting as much over into user fees as possible.
Okay. Is there any questions from the council for Judge Dunnick?
Oh, I got one, real quick. So Judge Dunnick, I know we talked back 2020, 2021, as far as our backlog of cases because of COVID and everything. Are you catching up with that?
Yes.
Because of the five days?
Yes. Being in court, having it be a full-time position has given us the opportunity to have more court sessions. There is no more backlog with the ordinances and the parking, they've been caught up, to the point of, we're working with the city attorney now to start filing dog ordinances on the parking days. So those additional days have been able to, we've been able to take care of all the city backlog. Infraction backlog and the misdemeanor backlog, having the additional day, and then actually bringing the pre-trials back into the courtroom or to the court office, since I'm over here, has given us the opportunity to move more cases. What I've done with being full-time is, we're able to set fewer cases per session because we have more sessions, which then gives more meaningful time on the cases, so defendants are able to have a proper pre-trial with the state, and we're able to get more accomplished with fewer set versus having, you know, before full-time and before COVID, we were setting 120, 130 cases for a nine o'clock session. So we would run till noon, if not later. Now, we're able to set 75. When you deal with an FTA rate, we're able to actually, we're actually able to handle the cases in a more appropriate manner, so we're able to get better resolutions and more resolutions to where the litigants are more pleased, or, pleased is the wrong word, but I'm satisfied with the, with the result. We're able to reset now within 30 days, where we were setting within four to six months.
So this is, this has been your first full year of being full-time, is that correct?
Second.
Second full year.
Second full year.
Okay, I couldn't remember if we did this halfway through 2021.
We did halfway through 2020. Well, like, the last quarter of 2020 was modified full-time, and then full-time 2021 and full-time 2022. But this has been the first full year where we have not had COVID impacting us, so there were still some COVID shutdowns in 2021, so.
Okay. And that's still, still working well, full-time?
Yes.
Sounds like it is. Is there any further questions from the council for Judge? Anything from the audience? Okay. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you.
City clerk.
Not too many changes. One of the things that I needed to increase was travel and training. I sent out a little supplement explaining those, but part of the reason why it was lower in the past was because COVID, we did everything via Zoom. Well, the clerk and clerk treasurers and controllers are supposed to go to training annually, there's so many credits you're supposed to have every year, and because of that, there's going to be, aside from registration fees, there's hotel, gas, expenses like that. Last year, I went to Evansville, and this year so far, I've only gone to the one here in town. Obviously, that didn't cost me anything but registration fees, and they do that annually, so that's one expense I won't, that actually makes it easier for me. So that $2,000 increase actually came from unemployment, which has been lowered from $5,000, I think on the sheet that I sent you, it says $5,000, but it's actually down to $3,000. Postage, I need to increase $1,000. As of June of this year, I'd already spent 64%, so I'm just slightly over, and the reason why postage is more for my office this year is because we're doing the parking violations. So anything that's out of town, so if you get a Ball State student that doesn't live here, it has to be sent certified mail, that's over $7 an envelope.
Yeah.
So that increased my postage quite a bit. And then, equipment and maintenance, this, I need, Craig, we've got a difference on what you got on your ordinance versus what I've put down on my sheet. I put down $9,000, you've got $8,000?
Yeah, we kept it the same as last year.
Okay, well, I'm already at 75% as of June in that line item, so I need it to be $9,000. I'm gonna, I'm actually, we're gonna run out of money.
Well, for next year, if we need anything additional.
You'll appropriate it, okay, well, then, that's his answer. That's all I can, that's all I have.
Is there any questions, Ms. Munson? Is there anything from the audience? Okay, thank you. Up next is city council. There was one change to the city council's budget, and it was in other services and charges, I'm trying to find it, but I believe it went from $6,000 to $2,000. Mr. Wright, would you mind?
Now, there was nothing being used out of that, I mean, we've been close to it, so we just moved some things around on it. There was, there was no use, Senate.
Do you remember, do you recall typically what, because I know we use, we use that, that for, I believe Councilman Clark has gone to some, or did some, took a trip to go look at a project this year. We also use it when we do our streaming on, when, you know, any special meetings, any committee meetings, things like that, of course, that, those charges come out of other services and charges. Do you recall what our year-to-date is this year?
I don't have it, I know it was well low.
Okay.
I mean, you weren't even close, that's the reason.
I didn't-
We didn't even have any second thought about it.
Yeah, I didn't think it was.
I think that was your trip to-
Chicago.
North, what, Joliet?
Joliet.
Yes.
Yep, okay. Any questions for Mr. Wright?
I don't really have a question, but just, I think we also use that back when, the first year that five of you guys came on and went to the training down in Indianapolis.
Yep.
So we won't need to do that in '23, but we will in '24, so that's something I may be keeping in mind.
Yeah.
If you have any new council members. For next year.
Yeah.
Yeah, next year's budget will be definitely-
Yep, and that is a great point. The Association of Indiana Municipalities hosts a training for newly elected officials. I think next year, we should definitely plan for that. If we have any new elected officials, then we certainly want to make sure that those people are trained and know what to expect coming onto the council.
Yeah, three people.
Yeah, we've got several up here, yeah, several up here who have been, yeah, who have been caucused into their positions that didn't receive that training.
We did not, yeah.
So something to, something to think about next year.
Well noted.
Yep, anything else from the council? Anything further, anything from the audience? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wright, I appreciate it. Beech Grove Cemetery. Good evening, Mr. Waters, is there anything about your budget you'd like to discuss?
No, well, we changed, added a lot to it. The biggest one was the part-time help. Reasoning on that is, I started there in July, we had three part-time people, we went up to seven part-time to get everything caught up to the way that, way it is now. It is all seasonal, and I plan on staggering, the seasonal help's 180-day term, or, I guess you'd use term, and must, plan on staggering that, starting some of them earlier. Their end date will be earlier than normal, but that way, they're not all leaving at one time. One of the seasonal part-time's been there three years. I had moved him to regular part-time, keep him around all year, and we're hoping to get some help in the office. They're trying to upgrade the database, the old systems, someone comes in wanting a grave, you got to look through five different files to find some of them, and it'd just be a big help to have somebody in there, so that's why the part-time's up. We've got the 2% on the salaries, and we, on the fuel, price of fuel, you don't know what it's going to be, and we added it, and I think that's basically it, the rest of it's in the salary.
Okay. Is there any questions from the council for Mr. Waters? The, the other services and charges, the $70,000 compared to $8,600 last year, if, and maybe I'm correct, is this what we approved? We approved the, I thought I remembered you asking that go into other services and charges when we approved some additional appropriations for you, is that, is this what reflects that?
I think it was, I can't remember which one, it was either the $75,000 or the $134,000 went into other services and charges, and that's for the building repairs.
Sure, yeah.
That they've actually started on today, but, and then the rest of it went in vehicle, mowers and vehicles.
Good deal.
But that's in appropriations for this year, that's got to be spent, so.
Okay.
This is on the budget.
Very good. Anything else from the council? Anything from the audience? Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Waters, appreciate it. That is it for all of the departments for the 2023 budget. We will begin with, if there are any amendments, are there any amendments put forward?
Mr. President.
Yes.
I have a question. Mike, could you? This hasn't really happened yet, but it's been, brought my attention, and nobody has a crystal ball, but the new EMTs that are hired by the city, they're, it's listed that they are non-union employees, is that correct?
They're civilian, non-union employees, yes, that's correct.
The firefighters' union didn't put them in there, and, but, is the city contract with ASME that all full-time employees have to be union?
No, and actually, we have quite a few full-time civil employees that are not union as well, so.
Is that exemptions, like confidential employees and elected officials and supervisors? Is that all in?
I mean, yeah, some of the confidentiality is probably part of the reason. I would say that, if we've not been asked either, I mean, that might be another reason why a group of employees would be created and not be created under the union. I'm not sure that they would fit into the ASME bucket, so, I mean, if the employee would want to come to the city, that would, they would have a request for us to consider, but we've not been asked to recognize any union on that as well.
I was just looking at if this would affect any budget down the road, because I, I thought the wording said that any full-time employees would have to be unionized. Did I miss something there?
Well, I, I mean, the clerk's office is saying they're not unionized either, so I know, like, our community development is not in the union as well. One time, they were, and then they came out. I would have to check with our attorneys on that, but.
So it would be all right for them to be non-union employees?
I mean, according to our attorneys, yes, because they were involved in that decision.
Mr. Wright saying that.
The clerk's office also does, and the court's not, either.
Personnel isn't as well, so.
Okay, well, I was just wanting to ask the question.
I mean, I don't have any grievances to that regard, so, I mean, I would obviously look at that if I did.
I understand. I wanted to ask the question, because this might affect something down the line, so.
Yeah, I understand.
While you're here, I thought I'd ask it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Is there any other questions from the council at this time? We'll open it up for any comments from the audience before we vote.
Rick Yenser, Muncie, former newsman, author, and I want to make, make it known, since I've had three texts out, I'm marching down McGaughy, campaigning, so you're all witnesses here. But as far as the budget, I hope that you keep taxes low and make sure that employees are paid, because there's been a lot of talk with a lot of schools and governments that this low pay that is employed here in this community is costing public service and government services, because they can't keep help. And hopefully, you can keep the administration accountable, because I, after we were talking about budgets a couple weeks ago, I read something about missing money in the park fund, and reliable sources have told me that this involves theft, which means that might be a federal or state investigation. So you need to watch over this administration to make sure the money is spent, is accounted for, and the taxpayers are protected. Let me give you a quick reminder about what happened this spring, or maybe last year, when the city bought that superfund site, they put a solar farm on it, and of course, the council voted it down correctly, because it didn't add up, because it would have been a cost to taxpayers, and the people involved had already been investigated, and, and some of the finance people involved in that have set up a whole slew of bill-to-operate, city halls, jails through the state, that government and the people don't own until the debt is paid off to them. So again, like old Dick Ember said, like some of you remember, liars figure, but figures do not lie. Ember said, like some of you remember, liars figure, but figures do not lie. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yenster. Anyone else from the audience wishing to speak on the proposed 2023 budget? Is there anything from the council? Any last thoughts on the budget? Anything that anyone would like to discuss? I do have a little bit of something. Just like last year, you know, I have some concerns about this budget, because I, honestly, I don't believe that it provides enough to live up to local government's most basic responsibilities. We're leaving our department heads to operate on the absolute bare minimum. In general, the only increases are the contractually obligated, the two percent raises. But even that two percent raise is, is not even close to the eight percent inflation that we're all dealing with. So we're giving a two percent raise. I would love to be able to see some more funds in here to give the full eight percent. The other increases are fuel, and the mayor even admitted it probably won't be enough to cover what's needed. I understand we'll have money available to do additional appropriations next year with cash on hand and ARP money that we still have available. In, in my opinion, we need to be budgeting for what is needed ahead of time rather than dealing with it down the road. The last two years, budgets have had, the budgets for the last two years have had zero dollars appropriated to the general fund from Edit, when the six years prior had an average of nearly 1.4 million dollars each year. At some point, we have got to get our priorities straight. We have an animal shelter that is underfunded. We have other areas that we could be improving on, and, but yet we budget for the absolute bare minimum. I understand, this is my opinion, and perhaps there are philosophical differences at play here, but that's where I'm at. I feel like if we take care of our basic responsibilities, that the free market will take care of our economic development ambitions. I hope that in the future, we can take care of everyone and use some Edit funds to provide for larger raises. 1.4 million dollars, if it were to stay on trend with what it's been in the past, would be able to provide everything that the animal shelter needs and other departments. That's my two cents. I just wanted to be on record with that. Is there anything else from the council? Anything else from the audience? Any amendments to entertain with the 2023 budget? We probably need to, because we have been reviewing the budget, we'll probably need to make a motion to adopt ordinance thirty-three dash twenty-two, so I will entertain a motion at this time.
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Councilman Polk, seconded by Councilwoman Selvi. Roll call, please, on ordinance thirty-three dash twenty-two.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Overby?
Yes.
Mr. Polk?
Yes.
Mr. Ingram?
Yes.
Ms. Selvi?
Yes.
Mr. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Dishman?
No.
President Robinson?
No.
Seven yeses, two nos.
With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion was made by Councilman Ingram. Seconded by Councilman Polk.
I was waiting for nobody else.
I will, all in favor of adjourn, signify by saying aye. Opposed, same sign, aye. Thank you, everyone.